Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, April the 12th. If you have a phone with you now, it'd be a great time to turn it off. I'm going to turn mine off. For those of you who are with us here for the first time, possibly, the way we do this is we'll have a little bit of housekeeping here at the beginning that we'll go through. When we get down to the cases that'll be heard in order, we'll call each one. The applicant will come forward, give us their name and address, tell us a little bit about what it is they're asking for. Commissioners may or may not have questions of them. If there are other people here who wish to be heard on that item, we'll hear from them as well. Commissioners may or may not have questions of them specifically. Also, there'll be a little bit of discussion. Someone will make a motion, and we'll vote on each one in turn. First order of business is to receive the minutes of the March 22nd meeting, Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to receive the minutes of the March 22nd, 2018 Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Would you cast your votes, please? They are received. We have continuance requests, items that appear on the agenda but will not be heard today.
Okay, we've received three requests for continuance on your agenda. Item B-17 for case S.P.U.D. 1040 is to be deferred to April 26th. Item B-18 for S.P.U.D. 1050 deferred to April 26th. An item B-19 for case S.P.U.D. 1048 has been withdrawn.
Is there anybody present here who wants to be heard on one of those items today? No, if not, I'll take a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to continue items, agenda items 17, 18, and 19. Would you cast your votes, please? They are continued.
We also received some new requests for continuance for item A-6 on the consent docket for case C-6984. All of these are requesting to be deferred to the April 26th meeting. Item B-9 for case S.P.U.D. 1051. Item B-10 for C-6979. And item B-15 for C-6981. Again, all deferred to April 26th.
Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue items, I'm sorry, 6, 10, 15, 9. And 9. Would you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued.
Next, onto the consent docket. We now have five items on consent since item 6 was continued. For the record, I'm going to read those in. Item 1 is ABC-925 for an ABC-2 overlay of 9148 North MacArthur Boulevard. Item 2 is C-6976, the final plat of Chisholm Creek Village, Phase 1. Item 3 is case C-6977, the final plat of Valencia Edition, Section 11. Item 4 is C-6980, the final plat of Twin Oaks Canyon, Phase 2. And item 5 is C-6982, the final plat of 9,000 Broadway.
Is there anybody present who wished to be heard on any of those items today? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve items 1 through 5. Would you cast your votes, please? And those are approved.
Moving on, the items requiring a separate vote. Item 7 is C-6968, the preliminary plat of Nichols Creek.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Cockmore Drive. Here today on behalf of the applicant, and with me is Kendall Dillon, who is the civil engineer for this project. This is a preliminary plat on a piece of dirt that we spoke about at length about a month ago. We had a comp plan application as well as a rezoning application. The rezoning application was recommended for approval by the planning commission. Ultimately, the city council did approve that R1 application, so the site is now zoned R1. You might recall that there was an individual here in protest at that time. Primarily, his protest dealt with drainage. So what we have here is the preliminary plat, and it is worth noting that in the eastern portion of this development, detention's not required. But even though it's not, we will be providing two different detention ponds right there, as you can see on the plat. It's our hope that that satisfies the problem. We do have quite a bit of open space, common area through that drainage channel that ultimately ends up in the neighborhood to the east. So we do believe we have appropriately accounted for all the drainage issues that may be out there. There are a handful of TEs, all of which we agree to, so we ask for your approval. Yes?
I did ask a question on this one that I didn't get an answer to prior to today's meeting that I -- specifically, on a lot of these items that we get through on, you know, these larger subdivisions that have stubs for future connection. You know, what we tend to see, or what I've seen so far in my experience on this commission, is that down the road, when the next development comes in, that we are wanting these to have that automobile connectivity to, we end up not doing it. We end up either doing a crash gate, or, you know, somebody comes in and says, "Well, I don't want the traffic through my neighborhood." I am -- it's getting harder and harder for me to feel okay about that, and I'm wondering, is there some way in the spuds, as we start to move forward from today, where we can include binding language in this item to ensure that we don't have, you know, the people that move into this neighborhood come back and fight what we are agreeing to do today as part of this item?
Well, I mean, you're doing it by plating it in this manner. I don't think that there's anything you could do to legally bind anybody. Certainly, when somebody buys a lot in this neighborhood, they're going to be able to pull the public record and see that this neighborhood is platted, and there are platted, you know, stub streets. There's nothing we could possibly do, or you would have the legal authority to do, to bind people outside of this development that they shall connect, and you -- I don't think there would be any function other than you're plating it. And so you have the right, when the person comes up and says, "We don't want to connect," to say no. But outside of plating it, I don't think there's anything you can do that would be stronger.
First of all, I have to say, I disagree with your premise. I think that this is done so routinely on plats that you may just not be aware of how common it is. The only time we ever see it is if it's -- if there's some reason why it's being objected to. And it's not uncommon for neighbors who are long established to think that connectivity is not as good an idea as we think it is, that we routinely tell them that unfortunately for them, this is our policy. We do not routinely grant waivers from this requirement, not by any means.
I feel like I've seen quite a few of them. I guess I will use this as my opportunity to say that I'm going to -- I'm going to find it really, really hard to ever support in the future that if it's, you know, a comp planned -- a direction in our comp plan, and it's something that we ask these people to do, when we start to see these come back, if the neighborhood next to this comes in and says, "Well," now these guys come back and say, "We don't want to connect." Like, I just, I'm going to struggle with that from here on. I just--
And I think that's a good thing. With respect to the exception of possibility of revisiting the issue of connectivity to commercial adjoining uses, I mean, I think this is our policy, and we do need to uphold it. There needs to be this connectivity. We're committed to this.
To Ace's point, and since we can only deal with today, it's not who's going to be the neighbor in the future, does the current preliminary plat indicate whether there is or is not a crash gate at that spot on the stub?
There's no crash gates. There's stubs.
Right, but there could end up being a crash gate there in the future, so can it indicate now whether it does or doesn't? Can it be approved that there will not be a crash gate there? I think that would be the only thing that could address his point.
You'd have to -- if this got approved as is, if we came back with a final plat that didn't show a stub, it would be a difference from the approved preliminary plat. We'd have to give a very it's or--
The stub will be there regardless, I get that, but crash gate specific, can we specify whether -- and we restrict that to there will not be a crash gate there now or in the future?
No, but you're approving the stub there. It's when the next development comes in, and then they want to do a stub, you can -- or a crash gate, you have to deny them at that point. That's your option.
Well, I think what happened previously, though, is what could happen on this is if they put a crash gate up there, couldn't they? They wanted to, but if we don't do something otherwise, can they put a -- can this development put a crash gate there over the next few years?
No. It's a public street. We would -- once this plat is dedicated and accepted by the city council, it would be accepted as public streets.
Okay, so by default, that edge cannot have a crash gate on this development?
Sure. We would not, unless we came here and you granted us that right, we wouldn't have the right to block the public street.
I think that takes care of it for now, then, and then the future development next door, we can insist they connect to it.
I don't think the developer would even install it because the land to the west and the south isn't developed yet at all.
Right. Previously, one that we dealt with, somebody did. When there was no neighbor, they put up a crash gate, and so then when the new development came next to it, the prior development had put up a crash gate. It wasn't a public street, is the difference, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct.
And in this case, it's a public street, so they can't put a crash. You got it. Takes care of it.
Yeah, I just wanted -- I don't know. We -- I feel like we've seen a lot of these recently, and kind of wanted to figure out what the solid ground was.
You're it. You're the bullwhar of defense.
Sure. All right.
Commissioners, other questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Hensley, you're looking very, very contemplative over there. Well, then, I'll take a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve C-6968. Would you cast -- did I ask if there was anybody else present who wanted to be heard on this matter? No? Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Item 8 is S.P.U.D. 1047 to rezone 1619 North Pennsylvania Avenue from R1 to S.P.U.D. 1047.
I will be recusing myself on this item.
The applicant present?
Hello, my name is Hunter Miki. I represent Omega Investments.
Pull it down just a little bit. There you go. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Hunter Miki. I represent Omega Investments for 1619 North Penn.
Tell us what it is you're asking for.
We're asking for a spud to rezone the property. Right, this is my first time, so I'm not real familiar with it.
You can find--
So the existing home, the main home on this one was a duplex at one time in the past. It's now a single-family home, and in the back, there was -- this is a historic, not a historic area, but an old house. And the garage in the back was a two-story with an apartment on the top and a garage on the bottom. Whenever -- it is now, the apartment in the back was demolished, and so we're wanting to split the lot and put the two-story duplex in the back. So before we got the property, it was like a two-family in the front, and then a single -- and then one apartment in the back, a full. And then, so right now, it's going to be a single-family on the front, and then the two apartments in the back.
So one of the questions that I had, and it's really a question to staff, is why items like the maximum building size and the lot size, even with respect to tract 1, make reference to R2 rather than R1?
Because the apartment in the back, it would be one unit on the bottom on the first floor, and one unit on the top.
But that's tract 2.
Okay.
Isn't it? Or do I have it backwards?
It could be. There's really no reason.
It could just as easily be R1.
Just to keep it consistent, it could be R1 regs on the -- on tract 1.
What would the differences be? What difference would it make?
If he wanted to come in at a later date, and, well, it wouldn't be any really any difference if we're just talking about setbacks and lot size.
No. Okay.
The use is prescribed as single-family, so it really wouldn't be different.
Okay. Is there anyone else here today who wants to be heard on this item? Commissioners, questions, comments? A motion?
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 8. Would you cast your votes, please?
Thank you.
It is approved.
Item 9 and 10 were continued. Item 11 is P.U.D. 1677 to rezone 13400 North Council Road from R1 to P.U.D. 1677.
Again, David Box, 522 Cockmore Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is an S.P.U.D. application that would allow for a attached single-family or duplex type of development. I do want to thank Commissioner Powers and Commissioner Cravens for taking an evening to come meet with us. This is an item that was previously on the docket. We continued it once I got contacted by a neighbor indicating that the neighborhood might have some concerns. So we did take an evening, and the engineer, the developer, myself, as well as the two planning commission members, met out at the clubhouse of the Neighborhood to the East, explained our development, kind of went through what we propose, listened to what concerns they might have, and in the end, we haven't heard anything back. I'm not aware of any protests being filed. Nobody contacted the engineer, myself, or the developer. I take that as a good thing. One of the benefits that this piece of land has as it relates to its location to the Neighborhood to the east, if you look at this right here, this entire thing will be platted as common area. It currently maintains a significant tree reserve that will be held. Additionally, the lot lines are a pretty significant distance from the actual property line, and so we have a pretty good amount of distance from the closest lot to the nearest house. It's in excess of over 200 feet, what would be the closest house to closest house in this neighborhood to the east. So Cindy, could you show the image of kind of the model of what we propose here? In exhibit 2 of your P.U.D., you'll see a proposed rendering, kind of elevation of what we proposed to install here. These will be a masonry product. We are going to have to plat it, and one of -- there you go. One of the things we're going to do is, there will be 35 structures, so a total of 70 dwelling units, but these will be platted where the lot line will actually split the structure in half. So unlike a typical duplex development where it'd be one structure on one lot, each side of these buildings will be able to be sold individually and owned individually. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions. I do not believe there's any TEs. There are not. We ask for your approval.
David, is preservation of the tree cover addressed specifically in the document?
I don't think it is, but we can certainly add something consistent with the exhibit here, because certainly, the -- what will be platted is common area, so this entirety of this lot, and then all of this back here that hasn't already had trees removed from that pipeline easement or transmission line easement, the intent is to certainly keep those trees in place. And so like you, I don't know if you can see this faint purple line, but this entire thing right here will be platted as common area.
I think that would be appropriate. I do have someone signed up to be heard on this item. Do we want to talk to them first, or -- okay?
First, I mentioned this, I think via an email as well. Whenever renderings are provided, I mean, obviously, we love to see those to understand what the vision is, but sometimes I get nervous that the, what I call the eye wash, might not be actually what we're getting. And so in this case, you show what looks like some kind of specialty paving for the drive? And my question is, are you guys committing to some kind of stone or brick-paved drive, or are you just showing that?
At this point, we don't know exactly what the drives will be. I mean, they will be a hard surface, you know, compatible with the city's ordinances, but it's not known, you know, at this moment, what the exact makeup of the drive might be.
It might be just a typical drive.
It could be just a typical concrete drive. I will say, in terms of, where I think you're going on the next question, the image at the house, one thing that we have in here is obviously the request of, or the requirement, that'd be 70% brick. You had asked in your email if we could get rid of the EFS. We're fine with doing that. We can remove that.
Actually, my second question was going to be on the drive.
Uh huh, sure.
And it's lining up or not lining up with--
Sure. And so we are not lining up with the Pebblestone Parkway. Our drive is down here further south. This drive further south meets the site distance requirement. If we were to mirror the drive that Pebblestone Parkway has, we would not meet site distance requirements due to the hill because the exit for our neighborhood would be on the north end rather than the south end, like it is for Pebblestone. And so, I don't know if you can see these red lines, but with the exit being on the north end, we do not meet site distance requirements to Memorial Road. And so the only location that will meet all site distance requirements was down here.
Well, I just love, if staff disagrees with that assessment, I'd love to hear. Otherwise--
We did work, the engineer did work with traffic staff as we were finalizing the location of the drive, and it'll be checked again certainly at the plating phase.
I would also add to that, that at the neighborhood meeting, there was at least some support for the fact that that common area that's in the southeast corner is what abuts the adjoining neighborhood, as opposed to that being a lot that backed up to that. And so if you flipped that image over to align the drives, you'd be throwing, assuming, I don't even think you can build there because it's floodplain, as I recall.
Part of it's floodplain.
But you'd be throwing backyards even closer to where the adjoining neighborhood is.
One point, I think, that you raised is something I would like to reinforce, and since we have so many members of the commission who are relatively new, I do think it is important that we all keep in mind that when they attach things like this, very often, what they are are conceptual drawings. There's not a commitment to a specific design or look other than what is included in the text, unless they very specifically say so. And we can't get dazzled by the eye candy, so. Alan Little, are you here today? Would you like to be heard?
We've got another neighbor here that's got something to read that some neighbors had written, and my concern with this, I'm not superimposed to it, and I'm not for it either, but I am concerned about these neighbors getting into our common area, our playground, because their common area is going to back right up to ours. And I think the cure to that would be to have them put a fence up around this property, a six-foot steel-pole wood fence. And they show it in their plan already, but they're going to put it up with each individual unit. If they were to put that fence up prior to constructing everything, it would make me feel a lot better. It would keep trash out of the stream and out of the woods that I don't know that they'd ever get cleaned up, and I don't know if you can make some type of concession for that. I don't know how this works.
I guess I'd never considered this. Are common areas in a neighborhood, are they like, are other people not allowed to come visit?
It's a private neighborhood, but we're a gated community.
Okay. That makes sense.
Generally speaking, the homeowners associations of each individual neighborhood are responsible for the maintenance and upkeep, and ownership generally reverts to them after development, after they're built out, so.
The challenge we have--
You mean it's not a public space?
That's right.
No?
It's not a public space. The HOA is required to have insurance for it, too.
And in a private neighborhood, the HOA has also got liability for people coming and going from the neighborhood, and frankly, an obligation to not have things like attractive nuisances, which, to his point, the common area, the pool and the poolhouse is all, and there's a basketball goal in that parking lot right there as well, that's immediately essentially adjacent to what would be this common area. So the common area is going to allow people to traverse, and I think that's the concern, that the HOA voiced that concern as well at the meeting, so. I'm not sure what the answer is, if we can require a fence in a common area, I don't know that we've ever, I've never seen that done, so I don't know exactly how we would do that, to be frank, but is there, you want to address that?
Sure. So we are willing to commit that there will be, you know, stockade fence with the steel posts. We're not willing to commit that developers are required to go and, you know, build some wall to, you know, bisect this neighborhood from this neighborhood to the east.
The question really is whether it would be possible to have it go up at the beginning of construction rather than on a lot-by-lot development basis.
No, it's not financially feasible. I mean, that would be a tremendous outlay of cash before anything was sold, and it's worth noting that the neighborhood to our east has developed in the same manner that we're proposing to develop, wherein each lot builds a fence when the house is built.
And I think that's okay. I think, I'm not bothered by that as much as I am ultimately, no one will ever be responsible for constructing the fence that bounds the common area from the adjoining neighborhood, so.
And I don't think we could, because there is a big swath of common area that falls within the floodplain. I don't, the Corps of Engineers is not going to allow us to fence that and block the flow of water.
Not as worried about that as much as I am all the houses, putting that up all at one time. And honestly, I think it would be cheaper for the developer to do all that at one time than you're going to charge the builders as they build each house.
And that's how these developments work, and so we're not willing to commit to that. We are willing to commit that we'll do the steel post with the stockade fence, and they'll be built as is common in single-family neighborhoods as each structure is built.
Personally, I feel if they can't commit to a fence, are they even committing to build what they're showing in a picture?
Well, and we talked about this at the meeting, and it was mentioned here today, that picture is not relevant. It, what is relevant is what's memorialized inside the P.U.D. language, and ultimately, what would be allowed within the subdivision regulations as it relates to a subsequently presented preliminary plat, which is not before us today. So ironically, even this plat that we're being showed as a potential plat is not, they could deviate from this before they came back before. So it's, you can't get caught up in that, and I think to Commissioner Heiss's point, to address, for example, the facade regulations and to eliminate the allowance, or to at least ask for the developer to eliminate, which they agreed to, the 30% EFS from that is something that we can memorialize in this document that can then be enforced. But we can enforce that picture.
I don't want the picture enforced. What I want enforced is that they put up a fence between our neighborhood and theirs, except for the small common area, which is only like the size of one or two lots. Those fences, they're already telling us that they're going to have them to begin with. Now, they're kind of, well, we may or may not.
I don't think that's what he's saying. I think what he's saying is that typically, how that is done is that as the development occurs, as the lots are developed individually, that's when the fence goes up. What they're not willing to commit to is that the fence will go in first, which I understood was what you were asking. Maybe I misunderstood.
I'm asking that the fence be put up first. I'm not real hot on this whole thing happening anyway.
Well, I, I mean, to be respectful, like, I feel like, you know, it's a question of fencing in or fencing out. If you don't want people on your property, maybe you should put up the fence.
It's not just fencing in or out, and it's the, when they start building, think about all the trash that's going to blow back into those woods. I know builders are supposed to be kept things up, but when they're building one at a time, you're dealing with different builders. Some control their trash better than others, but you're going to get all that trash back in there into the woods that they, that's going to be our property that that's going to blow onto, into that creek.
I just don't think that that's necessarily relevant to what we do here.
Yeah, I mean, trash is always going to be a issue. I think that's separate, but his point of, why don't you guys put up the fence? If you, I mean, you're the one that wants a fence.
Because they're going to be clearing their property. You couldn't put the fence up right now. You could put it up after they clear the property, I guess, but this isn't even--
I think you could put up a fence right now, though. I mean, wherever you want it.
Not without clearing trees. And they're going to clear those trees to be able to develop these lots.
It is not, it is not part of our subdivision regulations or policies that when residential development adjoins residential development, that we require that kind of separation to be installed prior to the initiation of construction. We just-- We just, I don't think I've ever seen us do that before.
Well, you and Scott were both at the neighborhood meeting where this was brought up, and you both agreed that this could be done. And it calmed a lot of neighbors down that aren't here now.
If they would agree to it.
Right, right. That's the problem. We said that if the developer would agree to that, then that's something that they could certainly do. If they're not willing to agree to it, what Ms. Powers is trying to explain is that we don't have a mechanism to enforce that through, in this case...
To acquire it.
Yeah, yeah, to, or to enforce it. If it's, if there's not a mechanism within the subdivision regulations that would require them to do it, our hands are tied. So, they're either willing to do it or they're not, and they're saying that they're not, and that's...
Okay. And my client did point out another thing. One of the other reasons we can't commit to it is during development, as you see in these plats, usually the utilities are in the back. And so, if you go and throw up that fence, it presents challenges in potentially, you know, removing the fence so that the city can approve our utilities to connect to the structure.
Okay. Well, with that, then, I'm not real keen on it. And I think we've got another neighbor that's got some things that she wants to talk about that I kind of agree with also.
Thank you. And would that neighbor be, is it Reina Mohan? Reina Mohan? Is it Mihan or Mohan? I'm sorry. Mohan?
I have a prepared statement. I have copies for you guys. May I hand those to you? This is just what I'm going to be saying. Can you hear me okay?
If you give us, yes, I can. If you give us your name and...
My name is Reina Mohan, and I'm at 13117 Box Canyon Road in Oklahoma City in Canyon Lakes Edition. And I'm here on behalf of our neighbors who are not, who are not happy with this development. Specifically, my, I've been a resident of Canyon Lakes since 2007. I'm reading this statement on behalf of our neighbor, John Dalton, and I'll read that to you now. Dear members of the Planning Commission, my name is John Dalton, and I'm an attorney and own a mortgage company here in Oklahoma City. I've also been a resident of Canyon Lakes since 2007 and one of the first homes that was built in this development. Due to the nature of my business, I see many neighborhood developments in our state. And I can tell you that Canyon Lakes offers amenities, activities, and even its own little culture that is unique to others around us. Our neighborhood retention rate is over 85%, which means that the number of people who have built or bought in here stay longer and in greater numbers than any other neighborhood I've seen or been able to research. The investment development that is being considered would do irreparable harm to our neighborhood and its homeowners, and that we would never be able to recover from, and it should not be allowed to pass. I had lunch yesterday with a friend who's been an appraiser for almost 20 years, is on the Oklahoma Board of Appraisers, and one of three appraisers that are allowed to do appraisals in Oklahoma County for sheriff sales. In his opinion, putting this investment development next to us would devalue our property a huge amount, and that value would continue to decrease each year as the properties got older and required more maintenance. Our home values have remained constant, and we have never been the subject of many short sales or even one foreclosure, but this would take those values down and would decrease the combined value of our neighborhood by potentially several million dollars. If each home just took a $15,000 hit, considering our 127 units, that's almost $2 million right there. The sheer number of investment properties we are talking about would literally overwhelm the neighborhood with people using the amenities we as homeowners pay for, and the overflow of people who would be coming to use our park, fish in our private lake, and use our pool would increase our HOA dues exponentially. As the chairperson of the pool committee, I have already, excuse me, I already have a tight budget that we'll work with, and putting in extra 70 families in our backyard who would inevitably filter in would be impossible to handle. Our pond has been the major selling point for potential home buyers and is also why we have such a unique culture in Canyon Lakes. We already have issues with non-residents fishing, and another 70 families right behind our friends would be a logistical nightmare to try and manage as the fish populations decline due to overfishing. Finally, the impact to the wildlife in the proposed land would be devastating. We have deer, raccoons, skunks, squirrels, snakes, hawks, owls, and coyotes that make their home there. This would essentially destroy their habitat, force them into a much smaller area, which would then decimate their populations, or they die from simply being run out of their homes and food source. Our kids love those woods and these animals, and to destroy a habitat like that just to put in some investment properties is unconscionable. Excuse me. I would plead with you to not approve this plan, due to the many reasons I've listed and so many others that were too long to add to this statement. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Stevens, any questions?
I got a few things.
I'll let you go first, but it's for her. I have one for David. Go ahead.
Ideologically, like, I don't believe it's our job to protect home values. And frankly, I have a real problem with, with looking at any, any residential development that might allow for more affordable homes than the one next to it to be a bad idea. It's like saying, you know, I don't know how to read it other than saying, I don't want people poorer than me living next to me. And that is not okay with me. And so, whenever we get things in here that, where the argument is about your home value, that's the only way I can read it. And I'll just say, you know, I just don't agree with it.
Yeah, I understand. Another point that is, when we all purchased our homes, all of the homes in the area were developed, built, and purchased with the intent of living in an R1-zoned environment. So, I mean, it's impacting us. These are, these are investments that we made as well. So, I just ask that you consider this, you know, our area and what they're trying to do. And I understand, I understand your opinion.
My question for David is very related, so if I may, but I hate to cut you off short if you have anything else. So, your point, I was looking here, why you needed to be a PUD, why not R1? I guess because it's duplexes, so if that's the case, as he educated me, why not R2? And then, the question would be whether R2 is appropriate next to R1. So, why is it a PUD instead of a R something?
So, if we had done R2, you wouldn't have certain commitments that we're doing here, that being the masonry product?
Sounds more restrictive. The PUD would be more restrictive than the R2.
Absolutely. So, the current city ordinance is both R1, R2. They don't have masonry requirements. So, if we did R2, you could do wood siding on every house. This adds restrictions that otherwise wouldn't exist.
Okay, so if I can combine then, because I was, I was agreeing with Ace. So, what we're really talking about then is residential next to residential, it's just that it's not R1. It's a enhanced R2 in the PUD. So, I appreciate you, if you were following what Ace was saying. I think I'm sympathetic to that as well. Seems consistent next door.
No, and I would, I would semi-agree with that. I actually do think that the consideration of protection of property values is one of many, many concerns that, you know, it's appropriate for us to address. And however, I think that I'm not willing to take sort of the next leap. I'm not willing to agree that, that the development of R2 next to an R1, traditional R1 neighborhood such as yours, is going to devalue that property. I, I think that's all about how it's developed. I think, you know, by putting this into a PUD, they are agreeing to additional restrictions on the development of the property. The, the fact that they are preserving the tree cover that is between them and you provides for an additional buffer between the two. I'm not saying it's not ever appropriate to consider that, but I don't find it persuasive in this particular case.
And we have one, one more gentleman who'd like to speak, I think.
Is there someone else who wanted to be heard?
Yes.
I don't have a sheet for you. Would you come down and give us your name and address, please?
My name's Keith Rockham, and I live at 13108 Box Canyon Road. We bought our house in 2007 and have been there ever since. Love the neighborhood. And we considered a lot of things with the residential and where the other properties were and how they might be developed. Of course, we were assured that it was an R1, and we wouldn't be facing, you know, this type of a thing. I'm concerned about property values, certainly. I'm concerned about the, about the things that we've paid for and that we maintain being used. It is irritating to see the pickups lined up along the pond and people fishing in, in a pond that we provide and maintain. Signs say residents only, but people don't pay attention. There doesn't seem to be much we can do about that. In fact, the concept of a gated community is a little bit difficult because it's pretty, people come and go however they want. So, being able to maintain it as a private place has been very difficult. So, everything that's been said before, I agree with. My biggest concern is traffic. We have a lot of trouble already. They widened council to four lanes. We've got, I don't know how many people work across the street at the Pay.com. We've got farmers. That's Memorial Road is, is one way on the south side going to the east, and one way on the north side going to the west until council. Then you have to come south of the Kilpatrick to go the rest of the way west. We already have in the evening, police officers at both the intersections, north and south of the Kilpatrick, to direct traffic in and out of the area at times when these businesses release. In the morning, it's difficult to get out, especially if you cross traffic and going south on council, it's difficult to get out. And if you're coming in in the evening and you're crossing traffic to come in from the north, there's also concerns and issues with, with the traffic there. Adding another, if you, if you assume two vehicles per, per house, there's another 140 people that are going to be coming and going in that small area. And, and I have a concern. We've seen it as cobblestone has developed, we've seen the traffic increase. It's become more of a thoroughfare because of the council road becoming four-lane, and I've got some real concerns about adding that amount of traffic to our area. So, that's one of my bigger concerns, but I do share the concerns with the rest of the neighbors.
I would echo his comments just from the standpoint that the staff report reflects that on the traffic piece, that it's expected to increase but not beyond the capacity of the arterial street. That's true, but just for the commissioner's information, this area at certain times of the day is plagued by a very serious traffic issue, particularly two times a day. So, I mean, his point is well-taken.
Yeah, the, the people that leave Pay.com have to come to that intersection of council and, and Memorial Road to go east or west, either one, and certainly to come south. The only, the only direction the people from Pay.com can go is to the west and into the area where I'm talking about where this intersection is. So, and it's, you know, from a personal note, we thought we had bought far enough out of town, and it was two-lane road and no traffic lights, and that obviously has changed. I would prefer it not change any further. So, I guess my, my request is that you deny this petition. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
You know, one, one comment that I would make with respect to this proposal in front of us, and remember, what we're really trying to decide here today is whether this particular patch of ground is appropriate for basically an underlying R2 zoning, whether it's, whether it's appropriate for, for lack of a better term, duplex zoning. One of the things that was discussed at the homeowners' meeting was the possibility, bordering on probability, that the alternative to this kind of development would be straight commercial development. And the impact of that, I think, would be much more negative on a neighborhood such as the one there to the south and east. So, I also think that with respect to the issue of, you know, diminished property values and so forth, it's important to keep in mind that our plan encourages a mixture of housing. You know, although everyone tends to think of R1 as the gold standard, in fact, you know, we, we want to see a variety of housing options available and not just in, in certain places. I mean, we want to see that mixture throughout the city, so.
I think this, I think, look, this, I disagree with the assumption that that is going to be maybe, while it fronts council, I think the more logical scenario for that, given some of the other development patterns I've seen in that area, is apartment is R4, which it would not at all shock me for an R4 application to come into that particular location. Because of its proximity to Paycom, because of its proximity to other employers that are moving up and down Memorial Road, so in that, in that way, I do see it as, you know, a bit of a challenge. And I, you know, I, I think, I'm sympathetic to, I guess, the north, that northeast bit of Canyon Lakes, there'll be some development that comes in near to that. I debate my, the impact with myself with respect to a neighborhood that is on an arterial that has no frontage necessarily with Canyon Lakes being a significant devaluing factor, but that's not necessarily why, I don't think it's relevant to the discussion that we have. Look, I think it's an appropriate development. It steps down from the commercial down the street, moving that way, and so, unless there's something else, let's vote. I move approval.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second.
Very, very, just to be clear, so sorry, so sorry. There were two amendments that were agreed to, though. Do we need to read those into the record?
Oh, yes, the EFIS.
Yes, sorry, I just...
No EFIS?
So, in facade regulation 9.1, you're willing to commit to the removal of...
Strike EFIS.
Strike EFIS.
And then, we can add in the fencing language a requirement that the stockade fences have steel posts.
And then, also the preservation of mature trees? Where would that be added? Preservation of the...
In the common area.
Okay. This is, is that...
I think, I think what he was asking was where would it be added in terms of what section of the PUD?
Oh, I mean, you can add as a TE. We can, I can work with staff on which section.
Okay. Staff comfortable with those amendments, the way that they're proposed? Okay.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 1677 with three amendments, one concerning the stockade fencing, one concerning the elimination of EFIS, and one concerning, I'm sorry, I lost track.
Preservation of trees.
Tree preservation, fine, okay. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 12 is PUD 1678 to rezone 4200 Southeast 59 from I-2 to PUD 1678.
Good afternoon, once again, David Box, 522 Callport Drive. With me today is Mr. Darren Redman, who is with DEX. DEX is a, a group affiliated with Volvo. And this is a site that they have targeted to put their use here in which they will be in a position to rehab trucks. I sent everybody a link to the website for DEX that shows their current facility in North Carolina, as well as goes to a video of what their operation really is. I'm going to walk through a number of changes that we've made to this PUD, but before I do that, I do want Mr. Redman, he's flown in from North Carolina, to be here to, to visit with the commission, give you a sense of what DEX does, what their standard of quality is, and allow you to ask any specific operational questions you may have.
Thank you. My name's Darren Redman. My address is 2016 Cornet's Row, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Mr. Redman, could you pull that microphone down just a... There you go. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I'd like to just point out Dex Heavy Duty Parts, we are a division of Volvo Group. Our core values are focused on environmental care. We are the second-largest manufacturer of heavy-duty trucks in the world. We're the only original equipment manufacturer that has a facility such as Dex where we have 100% recycling chain of the vehicles that we manufacture. Dex specifically is that division for Volvo Group. What we do, we basically dismantle heavy-duty trucks that are being phased out of operation. We recondition the major units of those, and we sell those components back to Mac and Volvo dealers so that an end customer can go to OE dealership and get a full array of economy of scale of good, better, best-type scenarios throughout the full lifecycle of their truck. We very heavily focus, again, in environmental care. We're changing the industry with what we're doing. We focus on that as far as leading the industry. We by far are not a junkyard or a salvage-type yard. People, when you say reconditioning or used parts, that's typically what they think, and that's by far not what we are. We only use major units. We don't pick and pull parts off of things. We're not open to where we allow... We're not open to where we allow people to do that. Our core business is working with large fleets and customers, again, to supply them with a secondary avenue of heavy-duty truck parts.
There are no questions of Mr. Redman.
Commissioners? No?
Okay. So this is a wonderful opportunity. You've got a building that has sat abandoned for some time, and it's worth noting that where this lies is in the area designated in the comp plan as heavy industrial. So it's zoned I-2 now, and so what we have filed is a PUD that retains the I-2 uses but adds the specific language we believe necessary for this company to operate on this site. When we first filed this application under 8.1 Use and Development Regulations, we had the scrap metal use unit included within this PUD. Mr. Gamble, who is here today to protest this, did express concerns with that. As Darren told you, they don't run a scrap metal operation. Unfortunately, the way that our code is written, there is very little we can do that wouldn't fall under what scrap operation says. So what we've done is we've removed that use unit, and instead, we inserted language within 8.1 that limits it to what we do. So for the record, I'll read it. "In addition to the uses specifically enumerated within this PUD, the use of dismantling a medium and heavy-duty vehicle for the recovery of assets shall be permitted. Components from wrecked or damaged vehicles shall be permitted to be sold as used parts, renovated, or recycled back into raw materials. On occasions, there may be some vehicles that are wrecked or damaged that are stored on-site." In addition, we then also add the use unit of automobile, vehicle, impound yard, and damaged vehicle auctions. Because damaged vehicles will be towed to the site, we believe it's necessary. Now, it's worth noting that as an I-2 base, that use is permitted today as a conditional use. And if you look at the conditions necessary to achieve your conditional use permit, we'd already meet it. So the use of the impound lot, we could do by right today. However, what we do is further restrict what could otherwise be done today. And by doing that, based upon comments made by Mr. Gamble, we add, under additional use restrictions, that the all dismantling of vehicles pursuant to the use is permitted within this PUD shall be required to be performed inside. Now, there does exist a scenario in which a truck is just simply too large to fit within, inside the building. It is anticipated, though, that that will be less than 1% of the time. Their goal is to always dismantle inside the building. Any outdoor screening that, or any outdoor storage we have will require, will be required to have a site-proof screening. The word junkyard was something that was very concerning to Mr. Gamble, so we say, nothing within this PUD shall be deemed to allow the following: junkyard. Again, I get a little hesitant to advise my client to agree to something like junkyard because what they do is a wonderful operation. However, somebody may look at it and think it's a junkyard. So we don't intend to have a junkyard. We don't intend to have a, you know, pull-apart type operation wherein people can come and, you know, pull parts off the vehicles and go over to the counter and buy them, but they do sell parts of trucks. And so we've worked closely with Mr. Gamble, as well as staff, and we believe we're in a position now, through the wording of this document, that the traditional scrap metal operation could not occur, and I'll defer to JJ to either say I'm right or I'm wrong, but the traditional scrap metal operation could not occur within this site. One, because the use unit's not there. We specifically allow for the exact use that we do. And two, the additional restrictions make clear that you can't have a junkyard. The other thing I was concerned about was the auction-type sale of vehicles. We specifically restrict that. You can't have an auction-type sale of vehicles. I would submit that the PUD you have now, frankly, is tighter than what the I-2 zoning that currently exists on the site would allow and the I-2 zoning that Mr. Gamble's site would allow. So we believe we've worked in good faith for quite some time, and we've whittled this down to the point to where we are concerned that any additional restrictions could be interpreted in a way that would not allow them to operate the business that they seek to operate. I know there was a question about the type of fencing. They have a very specific idea in mind as to who they're fencing. It's a product they've used elsewhere, elsewhere that has high-wind conditions. What the code would allow is stockade or sheet-metal fences. Because they are a division of Volvo, appearance and quality is very important to them. And so they would prefer to use this mesh screening that they have, coupled with the landscaping that they plan to do, to maintain the appearance. I think it's a better scenario, frankly, for the city than to allow a junky stockade or sheet-metal fence to meet code to be put up. So there are two TEs. We agree to them. I would note, TE 2 talks about driveway separation. The existing drives that are there is what we plan to utilize, but we can agree to the technical evaluation, insofar as it doesn't prohibit the existing drives. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have three.
Yes, ma'am.
And while I appreciate that every time you kind of step outside the parameters of our use unit explanations and descriptions, you're treading on soft ground, and I wanted to say right up front, I'm not suggesting that there's any attempt here to try to get away with something or whatever, but I want to be really clear about language that's used and what it really means, if it really means anything. There's a statement on our staff report that says that a small portion of the site may also be utilized for used truck sales. Is that, is that area specifically delineated, and if so, do we know where it is and?
Yes. So the image you see before you, you'll see the area in yellow. That is where it's anticipated. And what they sell and what we make clear in here is, these are, you know, fully operational refurbished trucks that have gone through the process within this facility that they would then be able to sell.
And so, I mean, that's not, that is very specifically designated. It's not like maybe and if so, and it would be here and.
That's right. And so that's an exhibit to the PUD that delineates where the used truck sales, the retail sales area for that would occur.
Okay. And there's also language that says the rare instance that all dismantling of trucks is, shall be indoors, but then it goes on to say, the rare, there may be a rare instance when a vehicle is too large to be dismantled within the current building, and it says that it's anticipated that this will be less than 1% of the time.
So here's why I did that.
It also says that all I-2 uses are, and God forbid, this business doesn't make it, if somebody else is using this board. I just want to be clear what we're really, you know, getting there in terms of guarantee, if anything.
So they don't intend to dismantle outside. There exists a scenario in which a truck or cab or something is too big to fit within the confines of the building. Although they don't anticipate that happening, they don't want to say, it shall never happen, and a neighbor drives by and says, my God, it happened, and now we're subject to, you know, the municipal court process. So we're accounting for that rarest of occasion that it may find themselves with a vehicle just too large to fit inside the confines of the building.
And we're accounting for that by allowing it?
Yes.
And so, I mean, so if we're allowing it, then what keeps it from happening 75% of the time?
So I think if it became more common than not, I think staff, and I'll defer to staff, but I think staff would be in a position to say, if, you know, different operators here now, and they are just flat-out dismantling outside, I think they'd be in a position to say that is outside of the bounds in which your PUD allows you to do that because of the way that this is worded. It's now clear that this is the intended use, or it's more than half the time, so it is the predominant use. Therefore, it's not permitted within this PUD, but, oh, I don't know. We just wanted to account for that 1%.
It's just a very slippery slope.
Well, I think David's right. It would just be, it would be a little difficult to enforce, but that scenario would play out.
What percent, Chairman? Fleet is bigger than the building.
Well, it's, they anticipate it would be less than 1%, that there'd be an odd.
But right now, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if you have no trucks that are big that won't fit in the building, you could say zero. But I think my question is, of the trucks that are currently in existence, how many of them, what percent won't fit in the building?
Every truck that exists on the road.
They don't own trucks.
They don't own trucks. It's not their fleet that they're working on.
What would be an example of a truck that wouldn't fit in the building? That might bring some clarity to the issue.
An example of that, we dismantle in our Advents, North Carolina, 350 trucks a year. In five years, we've dismantled one truck outside. And again, we're just, we're in the process of ISO 9000, 14001. We have no desire to dismantle trucks outside. The only time that comes into play is if the physical size will not fit through the door opening, or the crane capacity to dismantle that truck would not support it.
And what would an, what would an example of a truck like that be?
An example would be, in this area, maybe some.
Not like I'm going to know what this truck is, but.
Some type of an exotic oil rig application where it has a very heavy-duty bed on it for a specific application. Examples, we can handle refuge-type vehicles with large garbage compactors. Those would be handled like inside, but something specific to an oil use or really exotic, long, wheel-based, something of that nature. It's more the weight capacity and the size dimensions fitting through the door. But again, five years in Advents, North Carolina, we've physically done that one time out of 350 trucks a year, so.
Why can't you just, why can't you just say you won't do it?
We're, I think we're covering ourselves.
Because there exists the scenario in which they would need to service a vehicle that is too large or doesn't meet the capacity.
But why? I mean, they don't.
Because what he just said.
They don't, he can't control what he refurbishes.
Because they're a service provider for this type of industry, and there's not other providers like that, and because of where we are located, there is a lot of heavy oil and gas trucks. And it's worth noting, this is heavy industrial. So if there is any place in the city where this might be appropriate, I would submit that this is it. Heavy industrial doesn't get heavier than that, so this is where it is appropriate.
Is there, is this potential but rare instance the reason why I-2 would not accommodate? Is the issue that requires the PUD?
And outdoor storage.
And what?
The outdoor storage, too.
What part of outdoor storage is not accommodated by I-2?
We met with staff. It was the dismantling plus the outdoor storage.
Well, outdoor storage is allowed under I-2, so what's the component of that in this application that's not appropriate?
The dismantling.
It's the dismantling outside. It's not the storage. It's the dismantling.
No, it's not the storage, dismantling.
I think the concern would be if another user, and I know this is something that you brought up, Janice, is these guys didn't work out in Oklahoma, so they had to sell, and they sell to another unit, and the guy says, hey, it says here, I can, right? So is that, can you, we condition that to your guys?
No.
No. It's like a lot of zoning issues, though. I mean, there's a current issue going on with a facility that renders animal parts, and it's a subjective call on staff to say that the odor is an odor that isn't permitted in I-2, or it is an odor permitted in I-2. So there are subjective calls on zoning issues all through the code. And if this was, if another operator came on and inspectors believed and made clear that this is more than this limited thing that was accounted for in the PUD, and in fact, they're just flat-out dismantling on-site outside all the time, they'd probably issue a notice of violation and force the property owner at the time, or the end-user, to come in and explain what they're doing as to why they do or don't meet the PUD. But that's just the zoning process.
My concern about that, again, you're so lucky to have been drawn into this, is really about, I mean, that we be clear about how fragile, if that's the right word, these limitations are. You know, and think about whether there are other ways to deal with them. For instance, if there were a way to, say, require that dismantling, if it should ever happen, would happen, you know, on the south side of the building, so the furthest point away from residential uses. In other words, if there's some other way to address the potential issue that's a real true sort of land-use fix. I mean, I understand that this is property that's surrounded by other industrial properties with respect to the property across the street to the north.
And that's what I was going to say. I mean, frankly, if we came in here with an application and our only intent was to dismantle outside, it would be compatible with the comp plan. I mean, there's very few areas that are heavy industrial.
And if you came in here with just a straight I-3 application, would your use be accommodated by an I-3 application if we were just to rezone the parcel?
Right, it would probably be a recommendation for approval.
Well, and that's, and that's my point, is you're in an area here industrially that there's other I-3 properties that surround it. So hypothetically, they could come in and use the comp plan and the surrounding zoning to advocate for I-3. I'm not saying they'd get it, but I'm saying they'd have a good argument. And that's not what they're proposing here, which is much more restrictive than that.
And to back that up, and I know some of my fellow commissioners hate when I bring this up, but we did approve something very similar in the middle of a neighborhood recently. And so like, I just don't understand any hand-reain over this one. I'm, I think it's a great use. I think it makes sense.
I'm not particularly fussed at all with this application.
Before we jump off that cliff, we do have someone that signed up to be heard on this matter. Mr. Gamble?
I'm Gerald Gamble. I own the property immediately south, 10 acres of land of this property. I want to compliment David. David is really smart. He knows a lot more about this stuff than I do. When I got the applicant, when I got the notice about two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago.
Excuse me, you're about to change that. Please go back to that thing that you just had with the red and yellow and blue on it. I'm sorry. There you go. Thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, and members of the committee, thank you again. I'm Gerald Gamble. I own the property immediately south. I want to compliment Mr. Redman. We had a telephone conversation about a week and a half ago. This is a fine company. This is a fine use of this building. I went to their website. They have a wonderful video. And when I looked at their website, I saw that all of the activity of dismantling went on inside the building. But what was in the original PUD that was presented to you had this 8350.13, which is scrap metal, junkyards, recycling. I thought to myself, well, they're not doing that. Why can't they just do that in I-2? I talked to JJ, talked to John Wilson in the planning department, and I thought, well, I should commit it to writing, so I wrote the commission so that you would have my thoughts on it, and also to get David's attention. I sent him a copy as a courtesy, and that was a week ago Friday. Just on a personal note, my sister passed away the Friday before, so I was going to be gone last Thursday, Friday, but I told David that. So David said, we could have someone come from North Carolina to meet. I said, there's no reason for that. I said, let's just have a conference call. I'll come to your office, and have a conference call, let's find out their needs, I'll tell them my concerns, and see if we can get to some point that we can both agree with. So we had the conference call, and he confirmed that most everything went on inside. I'm not concerned about 1% or 3% because all they'd be doing is just dismantling the trucks so they could get the material inside. The three things that I was concerned about at the time was, I didn't want it cart-blank zoned as a junkyard. And what is stated in the, in the code, and it wasn't stated in the application specifically, but this is 8350.13 Scrap Operations. Basis of Business Primarily Engaged in the Storage, Sale, Dismantling, and Processing of Used or Wasted Material That Are Not Intended for Use in the Original Form. Typical Uses Include Automotive Wrecking Operations and Junkyards. Well, I asked JJ, I said, can't they rewrite the PUD and just state what they're going to do and not try to zone it as cart-blank as a junkyard? Because if they go away in three to five years, maybe somebody comes in and puts it in a junkyard. JJ, and he can confirm, he said, well, you could probably do that. I asked David about that, and he said, no, we need 8350. He then rewrote and sent me some revisions. I've got a copy of it here, dated April 4th, and he still had 8350.13 in there as a junkyard. But he did write in that they would primarily do this activity inside, no more than 1% outside. I'd asked him to keep the dumpsters up towards the building, and Mr. Redman had stated in a telephone conversation that they intended to do that anyway. I really wasn't going to get into the fencing today, but I will in a few minutes, just to show you what's going to go on so you'll have a full knowledge of that. I also went on Google Earth and took pictures of. There you go. There you go. It's in great shape. They take cabs and hoods of the trucks and stack them up very, up and down in rows. No objection to that at all. So after that, then. So after that, then, Dave and I talked, we had this conversation with Mr. Redman along with two brokers that were representing them on the telephone. But at that point, we still had the junkyard in there. So then he rewrote it again and sent it to me April 5th. Unfortunately, that was the day I was on my way to Dallas to attend a funeral for the next day, so I didn't really get to look at it until after this weekend. But he deleted 8350.13 and then described what they were going to be doing, which is what I had just suggested in the first place. So I'm happy with that. But he still has in there this use category, which is automotive vehicle impound yard and damaged vehicle auctions. That's what's stated in the code. Towaway lots and/or impound lots are lots used for the storage of damaged vehicles offered for sale or for auction. Now, it would seem to me that, and Mr. Redman can speak to this, I don't think this company does any of that. They don't do a towaway lot. They don't do impound lot. That means to me that police come and say, take this car away and pound it someplace. And they don't store damaged, they may store damaged trucks. They don't store damaged automobiles. So to kind of cut this short, I know you're busy and you have other things to do, if you keep 8300.16, I would respectfully request that two other sentences be added to 8.1 under additional provisions. He's, in the 8.1, it says they cannot use them as junkyard. But I would add, a prohibited use would be scrap metal recycling center wherein purchases of scrap are made from third parties or the general public. That means they can't, somebody can't bring scrap metal in there and they start buying scrap metal. Their metal that's left over, but they don't recycle, of course, they're going to be selling that. And the other, if they're going to keep the towaway in there, then let's say towaway lots, this is to be prohibited, towaway lots or impound lots used for the storage of wrecked automobiles. And we can delineate wrecked trucks, sure, they're going to have some of those. But if they could add those two items to the prohibited uses, I would be very happy. And again, I compliment you on your business. I think you're going to be a great corporate citizen. As a past chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, these are the people that we want. So I think you'll be great. Thank you very much. I'll be answering your questions.
Mr. Box, do you want to speak? Before you go away, Mr. Gamble, do you want to speak to those issues for us?
Yes. Not that we can't do it. We've already done it. We took out the scrap metal use unit. So by not having it in there, it's not allowed.
Yeah, well, real quick, and this is a staff issue that I want to make sure that Mr. Gamble and we're all saying the same thing and understanding it. You're referring to the use unit because that's what's defined by the ordinance to be the most applicable use unit. Now, unfortunately, I don't have all the use units memorized by heart.
I thought that was a requirement to be a member of the planning commission.
Turns out it's not. But my question is, are recycling centers or scrap metal yard, are those separate use units? Are those different, are they defined separately as a use unit within the code, first of all?
Okay, so I'll let JJ answer your question. But specifically, the scrap metal use unit has been deleted from this PUD and rather specifically described what we do. That was the paragraph-
Understood. And recycling center, is that a separate use unit that you know of?
The scrap operation has been deleted, and that's the salvage, the dismantling of trucks, cars, whatever. Recycling center where you're buying and receiving metal, that's an I-2 use if it's all done indoors, all storage, all receiving, nothing done outside. So any outdoor scrap metal would not be permitted.
Under I-2?
Under I-2. All has to be indoors.
Right. Unless, is that where the conditional permit comes in to do it outside?
No. So the conditional permit, he's also wanted us to take out 8300.17, which is automobile vehicle impound yard and damaged vehicle auctions.
Only to the extent that it deals with automobiles.
I'm asking to leave it. I'm asking to qualify that we don't have-
Automobiles.
And, with all due respect, it's allowed now. It's allowed on Mr. Gamble's property. It's an I-2 conditional use of which we meet the conditions. And so we're restricting it more than it would otherwise be restricted today because what we do say is auctions aren't allowed, okay? And so what I, what I find concerning to recommend to my client is that we agree to the word automobile. To me, a truck is an automobile. I Googled automobile. What I found was it's something with wheels and a combustible engine. Well, I think a truck fits that category. So I can't, I can't recommend that he say, no automobiles, because there might be a zoning inspector that's a little clever, you know, you know, that says, well, by God, a truck is an automobile. It's not allowed.
I get it. I get it. Thank you.
JJ, is there no distinction, Mag, in the code between automobiles and trucks?
Is there a difference in the code between automobiles and trucks?
Yeah, is there?
Certain use units there are. There's heavy truck repair. There's auto repair. In this case, I don't think it matters. Basically, to pare it down, the only thing he's doing outside of what would normally be permitted in I-2 is that he's taking trucks apart inside of a building.
Outside.
1%. But his use is the indoor dismantling of trucks. That's, that's the only thing that puts him outside of I-2.
Okay. Thank you. And, Mr. Box, there was one more of my, my three questions. At the bottom of page three of our staff report, there's this statement that the building, the existing building, will be updated to a more aesthetically pleasing appearance. And I was wondering, you know, in what possible enforceable way you could interpret that for me?
Well, we're going to add landscaping, and I'm sure that they'll need to paint and do some other things like that. But the intent was just to make clear that we're keeping the existing building, but as buildings tend to do when they sit vacant, it's going to be, you know, freshened up, rehabbed, landscaped, look more aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. And that was really kind of a question that I want, that, just like the conceptual drawings that people attach, I just want you to be aware that that kind of language is, aesthetically pleasing is in the eye of the beholder, I guess. Did you have something you asked us to elaborate?
Yes, I would like to, just for your edification, if nothing, nothing else. Please flip to the other colored picture as far as the fencing. Well, when this was first sent to me, it says updated chain link fencing with privacy screening per code. I didn't know what that meant. I went and talked to John Wilson. I'm not sure he knew what it was. I asked JJ. I'm not sure we knew what it meant. I asked David, what type of material will that be? He sent me a picture. I've got a copy of it here. It's so dark you can't tell what it is. I said, do you know what it is? He said, no, but I'll get you some more information. He then sent me the marketing brochure from the material that they intend to fit on the chain link fence. It's a polypropylene plastic that they tie to the fence. And amongst the other things that it says in their advertising material, a cost-effective screen, a great solution for construction job sites, events, and other light duty, short-term applications. Then further on, economic, I mean, expected life, three years. And then on the second page, I was walking over here this afternoon, 30 mile an hour wind, says not recommended for high wind areas. So if you look at the back page of the PUD, it shows, actually, what it shows is a construction fence with the bottom not even tied into. Now, there's a beautiful chain link fence out there. I don't object to what they're doing, but that's what the fence is going to look like. It might last two or three years in the Oklahoma wind, but I appreciate your consideration.
We were just about to get to that.
So he asked for some additional information. We sent him a similar type product. This, so we sent him this information. This is not going to be temporary. They, and I'm going to let Darren come up here in a minute and talk about the success they've had with the product they intend to use. They couldn't find the exact spec sheet for the company they're going to use to supply the fencing material here. Again, one of their primary concerns is aesthetics. And what the code would allow are stockade fence or sheet metal fence, which I believe are not aesthetically pleasing. The landscaping in addition to this screening on the existing chain link fence that already is there is going to be more aesthetically pleasing. It will look better than industrial uses typically look. And so we're, we find ourselves in an odd position, which we do oftentimes with an outdated code that we currently have, in which there are new products that are better than what the minimal standards that the code might require. But I'd like Darren to maybe walk through their, their success that they've had with this particular product.
Thank you. We've tried various levels of fencing. Obviously, again, with being part of Albo, they have facility requirements as well. The primary focus that we would use is proper landscaping, staggered landscaping, that type thing. The fence is more of a secure barrier. And then we have put a mesh type, again, not particularly this brand or company. This was one just at the spur of the moment. I had to supply some type of picture. We gave pictures of the actual facility in Advance so that we could show that. But the primary usage of this, when we've used a solid sheet metal type fencing or something of that nature, the wind and the various things, again, it gives you that salvage or junkyard type look, which doesn't fit in our business model and the aesthetics of our company code. So our primary goal historically has been proper landscaping, and then this is just the secondary to make sure that there's no visual through the fence at all. But in addition to that, this type of material allows wind flow through it. When you have a solid sheet metal or some permanent type barrier like that, you typically end up with damage or something of that nature. It creates more of an issue than what this type of solution would allow. So this, we've tried different things. Again, our primary focus, we, we focus on the aesthetics of the company and our organization. So we, we don't intend to have anything that doesn't fit in our brand image or anything of that nature.
JJ, does, just what they're suggesting meet code?
On its own, no. It could be used in conjunction with, or you could do the screening with landscaping. But on its own, no, it doesn't meet code.
Are they required to screen between I-2? Isn't that I-2 to I-2?
They're required screening of the blue area on the north and east and on the purple area at the bottom on the east because it's adjacent to a street.
Right.
If they store stuff outside, it's got to be within that area and screened. It can be a fence. It could be landscaping sufficient to screen it. No screenings required at all on the south.
All right. Right now, what you have is a chain link fence with no landscaping. So what they're proposing to do is add landscaping and then in the areas in which outdoor storage will be housed, you'll have that, that mesh screen.
They would also, you'd also be required to screen where it is across the street from the residential property to north, right?
If there's outdoor storage.
Not just the outdoor storage.
Only if it's outdoor storage.
I think the industrial use itself would have to be screened from that residential property.
Not across an arterial. If it's across a local street, it would.
Okay, okay.
So you're talking about putting the, what you showed us?
Yeah, yeah, where it's required.
All along the east side and the north side?
And perhaps a bit on the north if we have, in that blue, if we have outdoor storage. And the benefit here is, you know, the chain link fence already exists. And so we're going to be able to attach this mesh and then landscape outside of it.
Well, so I guess, what would be lovely is, I mean, if they were offered the opportunity to try this experiment, I mean, it'd be great if we could find another material that actually looks good and works. The, the problem is whether, you know, what happens if it doesn't work? If they're required to screen it, I guess they can make the attempt, and if it doesn't work, then they would be required to provide some additional screening. I don't necessarily want to approve this specifically, and then if it fails, just be left with nothing.
Well, if it fails, it wouldn't be screening appropriately and the PUD would require us to screen it.
So I think, I think within that conditional approval, I would be comfortable. If it, if you try and fail, you'd have to replace it.
Yeah, because I think the PUD would require it. Because at that point, if it failed, we would no longer be adequately screening the outdoor storage.
I will say this, the number of stockade fences that exist in this city that are gray, black, falling down, et cetera, I mean, you know, maintenance is maintenance, right? Whether it's stockade or some other sort, I bet there's more stockade that's gone bad than any of the rest, so.
Sheet metal fencing is a terrible idea.
Yeah.
For the record.
Yeah.
It's a terrible idea.
And I'm all in favor of allowing for the innovation of the development of new products. That's a good thing, so. Is there anybody else here who wishes to be heard on this item today? If not, commissioners, I have comments, questions?
Yeah, one quick question. Mostly so I understand for the future, this phrase of less than 1%, I know it's hard to monitor and enforce it. Is that binding on future owners as well?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because I do appreciate, I hate opening that, none of us like doing that, but I understand it for today, but for future applicants, I'd hate for us to get into, okay, less than 30%, less than 20%. I like the definitiveness, less than 1%. It's clear. It's extremely rare, so it's easier to monitor and enforce. So if somebody came in and said, we're going to do it less than 25% of the time, wait a minute, who's going to monitor and figure that out? So I do appreciate that you didn't come in with a less than 20%, less than 1%, we get it. It's extremely rare. It's a rare exception. And better that it's enforceable in the future, too. I was afraid it was just you guys. That works for me.
No, it will run with the land and be binding on successors.
I think we should audit once a year. The asterisk, how many trucks have gone through there and how many trucks were dismantled outside? Are you agreeable to that, Counselor?
Well, perhaps. If, I guess the commission probably designate you as the lead auditor.
Respectfully declined.
Okay.
With all that said, I think this is a great development. I have absolutely no issues with it. It's been abandoned for quite some time. This has got to be an improvement for the area. I will recommend approval to City Council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, I am number 12. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
I'll make one more request. Since I have concern about metal recycling and you didn't accept what I had to say, can we have it in the public record that this property under this PUD may not be used as a metal recycling center?
I think what we decided is that the zoning does not allow that.
Good. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I didn't see what you were trying to say. You're about to make a request. I want to make sure I got that right.
Did you, I'm sorry, is there some question about what's going on?
No, I haven't looked. It wasn't on at all, so I just want to make sure it's what there is. She's open. You're open.
Hey, item 13 is B17. This is a variance to Article 3, Sections 5.7.3b and 5.8.1a of the Oklahoma City subdivision regulations.
The applicant present, Ms. McCory, aren't you glad you sat through all of that? Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Name is Ron McCory. Address is 1212 Northwest 198th Street, Edmond, Oklahoma, 73012.
And tell us what it is that you're asking us for and why.
Okay, but before I start, I'll give a little history about this project. I purchased this project maybe two, or purchased a lot about two years ago. It's on the corner of Northwest 45th and Blackboulder. There was one single family home facing Northwest 45th Street. I demoed that property and my initial intentions were to build two duplexes, one facing Northwest 45th and one facing Northwest Blackboulder. But after discussions with Janice and the neighborhood, they had concerns that building duplexes would promote rentals, whereas the neighbors, they were wanting to promote ownership. So after these discussions, we decided to build two, two-story, single-family homes that are facing north Blackboulder. And where we're at in that process is we're 100% complete with construction. A couple of days ago, we received our certificate of occupancy, and the only thing remaining within this PUD is to split the lot, which is the issue that's going to be brought up right now. So my intention was to split the lot directly in half. It's 137 feet long. It's 137 feet long, so about 68 and 1/2. There'd just be a split. And the issue about splitting was utilities. There's a sewer line that runs from the east to west on the very north property, and so if I split this lot, it doesn't give the south house access to the main line. So my variation, which I already had my lawyer draw up the document, is to create a private easement that will allow the south house or 4601 to repair or maintain the sewer line that's running on the west end of the north lot. That's where it stands right now. So I did have discussions with utilities. Utilities' solution was to create a panhandle effect in that a portion of north's lot will be owned by south's lot. But the issue with that is it would violate the spud's requirement in that each lot has to be 4,000 square feet. The, the solution I have, again, it's a private easement, and it would be transferable during the closing process. And that's all I have at this point.
Was the problem that, like, at some point in the process, you were never informed that this would be necessary from utilities?
I was, I was, at the very beginning, there was some verbiage in the spud that said utilities would need to approve it. Utilities did mention this panhandle. I thought it was a solution, not the solution, and I didn't realize it was the solution until I tried splitting the lot.
So is this your first?
Yes.
Project like this?
Right.
This is very common. It's typically what we see. I haven't seen, like, I understand why utilities wants it, so it's hard for me to, like, I guess I would need to work through how the private easement would work in terms of the city's liability when repairing or servicing, you know, an issue with the line.
And I did bring this up to developments, and they were telling me that it's done all the time, you just need to go through the process and let the, let the planning...
Well, sorry, and I forgot.
Yes.
It seems like it would be just as easy if it currently violates your existing spud to amend the spud versus seek the variance.
Yeah, so, so it's not only a violation, but also if I'm getting into the new owner's mind, so would I rather own a home with a backyard that I own or that somebody else owns?
Have you already sold them? Are they already sold?
They're, they're, ones on the market, ones being touched up.
I understand that, but I think, to me, that it's hard...
How big is it? I mean, what are we talking about? Give me an idea what this panhandle needs to be. Is it?
It's about...
Typically, it's like five feet.
How many?
I'm sorry?
Typically, it's five feet, right? What are the...
Yeah, so utilities, they did mention that they would like 10-feet easement, and so I think the concern is, if you look at the lot, so if you, if you split it in half, 4601 is on the south, 4605 is on the north. So if, on the west end, there's going to be a sewer line that runs from the very north to about halfway into 4601 or the south house. And so if you divide 137, divide it by two, 68 and 1/2, so it's about 68 and 1/2 feet of private easement space by 10.
Wait a minute, is that what I'm asking, right? I mean, you need, in other words, you'd have to, the south lot would have a panhandle that goes up to the sewer line.
Right.
It would be 68 feet long?
68 and 1/2 by 10.
By 10.
Well...
That's bigger than I anticipated.
The main, I guess the main concern I have is, like, you know, we see a lot of these.
Yeah.
Only going to see more. And I don't want to set a precedent, especially whenever it's based off of, well, it hurts the marketability of my unit. Because at that point, I mean, we're getting into some shaky area.
Yeah.
I think what you're saying is true. I mean, I know I have been really encouraging the implementation of density through multiple single-family units, just like this one. And these units face Blackwolder, so they have a very shallow backyard anyway, and they had to, you know, make sure that they were set back far enough off of Blackwolder to get the cars parked in the driveways where they're not overlapping the sidewalks and, you know, and so on and so forth. So the placement of the structure on the property, but I hear what you're saying, I hadn't really thought about that, that it's going to be a recurring issue. And I, you know, I want, I want to find a solution that works for you, but I also want to find a solution that works for us, that's going to have some, you know, broader applicability here.
And I, just a quick comment, and I think one thing that would definitely help out the process in the future is, so the city was pretty hard on me to come up with details with elevations and with what I'm going to build. And in return, I think it would be good for the city to come up with those same details on what they're expecting for utility. That would go into the spud.
So, you said, you could extend the sewer too, right?
Well, that is, that is an option, yes. But at this point...
Because you're served by water, so there's, there's, there's not just an option, there's extending the sewer.
Extending sewer is extremely expensive.
I'm not saying it's cheap. But then, and what I understand is that it wouldn't have necessarily to be 10 feet. All the city needs is 7 and 1/2 feet, which is, I'm not saying, but 2 and 1/2 feet's 2 and 1/2 feet, so. I mean, I, I'm, I'm kind of, it seems like they gave you some choices, not just a choice.
Well, extending the sewer line wasn't a choice at the very beginning. It became a choice, yes, after I...
Why wasn't it a choice at the very beginning?
Well, because it's, the, what, the option that got thrown out, and again, I thought it was just an option, was the panhandle effect, or developing a panhandle. And, and so after hearing that and talking to my lawyer, she brought up another solution, and maybe it was my fault not going back and just assuming that the solution was better because with her solution, my lawyer's solution, this gave the opportunity to give south house access to the sewer line, but also have the north have ownership of the backyard.
So the private easement option?
Right.
And the city is not enamored of private easement options?
Frankly so.
Frankly, I get it's an easier option for you, maybe, at this point, but I don't know if it's at all an easier option for two homeowners at a later point to where one says, I've got this private easement, here I come. And I mean, look, that's, that's a recipe for disaster, it seems to me. I mean, I have a right to come across your property, which we understand that legally, I get that, but it's one thing to say, I own this here, and I can do whatever I want, or I have to be here, but when your north guy owns it, he's going to, the first thing he's going to do is plant trees out there.
Well, that's...
He's going to do all, he's going to do the rest of the stuff that owners do with their property to maintain it in a brand-new piece of property. So I don't see that that's, like you said, Ace, I don't see that solution works long-term.
Well, so...
Personal belief.
Just to address some of your concerns, so within this document that my lawyer drew up, there can't be any type of construction on that easement path. And so I understand your concern that it may cause some issues, but what's the issue of a, of a new sewer line going bad? I mean, it, I mean, is that a one in 100-year, whereas...
In these favor, huh?
It happens a lot.
But, but, yeah, so where I'm getting with that is, are there more issues created giving the backyard of north's house to south as opposed to just letting north own it and giving it a private easement? To me, there's more maintenance issues doing it, the panhandle effect, in my, in my opinion.
Unfortunately, I can't agree with you on this one. I, I know it sucks. You're not pumped about this solution, but I, and I really encourage you to do more projects like this. I want to see more of them. But on this, I'm going to have to, I can't support you, and I'm going to have to ask that you just chalk this up as a lesson learned, and next time, work with you, make sure to work with utilities always on these, and we can get it right. But that's my take on it.
Okay, so were there any issues of not splitting the lot?
Well, what's it look like?
Like, like that?
Well, you're going to have to work it through. I get that, so it's split, the south half now has a panhandle? Now, that now has a panhandle that goes up, so it's not, I mean, we don't have, I don't have any issues with splitting it, but I don't know what...
Well, I think the question is, if the lot is not split, then it remains in single ownership. There's not the need to address the extension. I mean, it can, can be extended.
It's all one owner.
It's all one owner.
Oh.
And then, I guess one of them would be rented, or both would be rented?
Both would be rented, which, which the neighbors were fighting at the beginning.
Is that, is that allowable per the current zoning?
Well, you, I'm just curious, you don't want...
I mean, yeah, I guess you can't, yeah, never mind. Yeah, it would be...
I'll just say, for what it's worth, it was always contemplated that the units being constructed would be for sale. He's not in the property management rental business. That's not what he does, so.
So you don't want to consider just amending the PUD to take care of this panhandle? Is that right? That, that's, that's a choice.
Yeah, it is a choice. My concern is with the marketability of that solution.
I just, I do want you to know, though, it is a very common solution. I think everybody else doing these types of things is doing the same thing, and so if you, I question whether it would hurt the marketability, but I'm not the developer.
Right.
It's not my application, but I don't think you're going to get your variance.
Yeah, I can count. I don't think you've got five votes.
I don't think you've got that, so...
So the question is whether you want to take a step back and go a different direction.
You want to think about it, is what we're saying. Because you're not going to get the variances in front of us, I don't believe, so.
Yeah, I'll just keep it one lot for now.
So...
You're withdrawing now, okay?
You're withdrawing, yes?
You don't want to, you don't want to take a continuance and think about it?
Couple of weeks and think about it?
Um...
You're getting some...
Well, I mean, you don't want to make your decision, right?
It's not our decision, but we're, we're going to deny this application. You might step back, is what we're trying to tell you.
Okay.
I mean, look, look to, look, look that way. Look, look, look that way, so.
That's what, that's what I would do if I were you. Take a couple of weeks and think about it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so that's a two-week continuance to the 26th. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to continue this item until the 26th.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to continue this item until the 26th. Will you cast your votes, please? It's continued.
Item 14 is C-6975, the final plat of Sycamore Creek, Section 6.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Here behalf of the applicant, Jason Spencer, the civil engineer is here with me. This is a final plat of a portion of Sycamore Creek. It's a development that you have seen several times. This particular final plat presents a fairly unique issue. What we're asking for is a variance to the connection requirement. We've talked about that and fencing today, perhaps more than anything else. And when this application was filed, I got a call from the member of the city council that resides over this ward, and there was a very specific agreement reached by the city council years and years ago with the developer of this, this site, the neighbors to the north, and I believe the then-planning commission member. This agreement goes back to 2013, and the agreement reached by the city council was that there would be no connection here for vehicular traffic. What we show within our plat is a emergency access connection. So what we're asking for is a variance to the requirement that there be connection, and we're asking you to do that to honor the commitment and the agreement reached by the city council of Oklahoma City many years ago. So with that, I'd ask for a variance to honor that agreement.
And I guess what I would say about that is that, you know, our, our commitment to connectivity is something that may postdate that agreement, but it's pretty simple and pretty strong. And, you know, as has been discussed here earlier today, unless there's some actual physical reason why it's not workable, or some public street, private street connection issue, or some other reason why...
I feel like, yeah, I think it's one of those where I, you know, my, it's hard for me to go against staff, and it seems like maybe you take this up to city council, and they can work out who...
Well, here's the, here's the unique position we find ourselves in under the current statutory framework in Oklahoma City.
It's not...
The city council, although they are the legislative body of this city, they don't hear plating cases, and so we're in an awkward position in which you, in theory, have the power to deny an application and incur liability on the city and force a district court action to force us to get the agreement that the city council reached adhere to. And so it's a...
Do we at least have a copy of this agreement?
So it's actually two. So it's the original PUD, and then more recently, this was zoned pursuant to PUD 1652, and that, you had some neighbors here came and protested, and at the city council councilman McAtee once again reasserted that previous agreement from 2003, and it was, my understanding, incorporated within the PUD, the 1652, which is the most recent iteration on this property.
Can we at least take some time to review what that is, or, I don't know, how the rest of you guys feel, but...
So I don't think you'd be going against staff, because staff's given you literally every option available. Deny it, approve it, or continue it. So you'd just be agreeing with the staff version that I like.
The last time this item came to us, we required the connection.
Oh.
I don't think anything has changed since then, so.
On the preliminary plat.
I guess the knowledge of whatever this agreement was, but I don't...
Well, so actually, there's two cases today that make this, this particular instance really interesting. And one of them was the issue, the discussion about connectivity. The other is that when you look at these things, the applicants will bring in a copy of their proposed plat and show it to you at the zoning phase of an application, which frankly is irrelevant. It really is irrelevant, in my opinion, to the entire application discussion because it's like that pretty picture of the building, right? And so then what happens is that the citizens in that neighborhood, they grab a hold of that plat picture, that what a plat could look like one day, and they take it to their city council person, and that stuff turns into discussions at that point in the process about what should be memorialized in the PUD. And so if there is something in that PUD that memorializes an agreement, because as much as the city planning department likes connectivity, neighbors don't always like connectivity, and they advocate through their legislative body to prevent it, we saw it in a case today. And so I understand the desire to have connectivity. I spent a little time getting educated on that issue, and while I still have a problem with it when they're not compatible uses, I support it from a neighborhood perspective, unless instances like this, where neighbors have voiced their opinion, talked to their council person, and in the zoning process, right, wrong, or indifferent, got that as a condition to their agreement to have the PUD passed. So how do you go back on something like that now? And as Counselor Box is not so softly pointing out, there's a legal issue here too. pointing out, there's a legal issue here too, that would be created by denial of the application, I want to make sure that that's clear, if that is in existence in the PUD, so...
I thought I was being fairly subtle, but perhaps...
Well, I, I don't know that I, I'm sure there may be a consideration, anybody consuming anybody, anytime, I get that, but this is our mandate legally, I mean, we decide this, so if we decide this, as David has said, I mean, we're kind of following our legal mandate, right? So it's, it's not just, the councilman may have overstepped his bounds when he made an agreement, I don't know, I'm not speaking to that, I get, I get his point, he's in a different role than we are, so I just toss that out for consideration.
For the record, I want it to be clear, I don't think the councilman overstepped his bounds. I, I think you did what councilmen do, and that's meet with constituents and developers and, and try to form, or try to, try to come to an agreement.
Wait, I want to be sure I understand, who was the agreement between, was it in writing or not, maybe I, maybe I missed it?
The neighbors to the north, the council, and the developer.
It went to the full city council? It wasn't just one city councilman off on the, on his own?
That's right.
Okay, good. How do they want to encourage single councilmen to go put us in bad position?
No, and they wouldn't have the ability to do that.
Well, indirectly, I don't know if I was hearing, but no, that's not what happened.
No, no, no.
Okay.
So what is it that the PUD says to this particular issue?
The, what I'm told, again, I wasn't, wasn't there back in 2003 when this was, was struck, but it was an agreement that there would be no connection.
Well, it's a document, I mean, is it...
And when the most recent plat went through city council, Councilman McAteer made a point that the previous agreements would in fact be adhered to, and we said yes.
And what are those agreements? Where are they?
If there would be no vehicular connection.
I mean, is that memorialized in the PUD?
It's my understanding it is, I don't have the copy of the PUD with me here.
Well, let's find out.
I don't believe it is, but we don't have the plat here, so we need to take a look at it.
I know we addressed it from this podium at the city council the day that it was approved.
But that's not a council issue, I mean, plating is ardeal.
It, and that's, again, it's a yes. It's kind of, no, just kidding.
Why don't we do this, let's, let's see what the PUD says?
I agree.
Since none of us have it, I don't, so then we'll know, then we can take appropriate action in two weeks.
We're the third option, but...
How's that sound?
I'll take a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion to second to continue this item until April 26th, will you cast your votes, please? It is continued.
See you in two weeks.
We were going to see you in two weeks.
Item 15 is continued, item 16 is SPOD 1052 to rezone 1117 Northwest 56th from SPOD 383 to SPOD 1052.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson on behalf of the applicant, here with me is also Mark Zitza from my office, as well as Traffic Commissioner Rob Littlefield, who represents the neighborhood that we're developing in. What you have before you today is a SPOD that we've developed for this piece of property that is west of what's known as a split T commercial tract.
And have you addressed the panhandle issue on the sewer, that's what I want to know.
We agreed with staff that we would take that up at the final plat.
Okay.
But I will say that I don't agree with the, the issue of making panhandles, but we'll work that out.
Okay.
It was all I could do to keep seated. So just as an example, this is the, right behind the commercial, this is straight C3 to our east, this is currently zoned under a plat or a SPUD for an office use, what I'm showing in this picture is there's similar projects that have gone on in the, in the neighborhood, which have been very successful, and the neighbors have appreciated those updated developments and its increased property values, it's been a really good thing, and so we made some minor changes as a result of some meetings we had last week that Ms. Powers made, and the neighborhood went way out of their way to get with us in a timely manner, get responses back to us, we made a few minor changes, which I'll, I'll read into the, to the meeting minutes, but we didn't get all the comments delivered to the staff until Thursday, and so that's why you have the recommended continuance. So we're asking this be considered today, we think we have worked through everything, that the changes really don't affect the land utilities or the zoning aspect of things, they really deal with more of building setbacks and things like that, so just real quickly, this is an exhibit that is included in the SPUD document, and one of the items that the neighbors wanted us to try and do was, as you can see, there's a little bit of a disparity between the side yard setback of the commercial tract, and there's a residential home that's here that doesn't show up, and they're set at 25 feet. What we requested, that we be able to have a little bit of flexibility in the front yard setback and allow up to 50% of our front to be at 20 feet, the rest of it would have to be at or behind 25 feet, and we agreed that there could be a deck for the second floor of these units, but none of the building could be closer than 25 feet on the second floor. So that was a, very important to the neighbors, and that's what we agreed to do, and it's included as an exhibit in the plat. And so the few minor changes, the one I just explained, was included, we also agreed that the, because there's no parking on our budding street, there's actually no curb and gutter there, that if we apply for a revocable permit that would allow us to put some pervious paving to allow for parking in the front, as they've done on the other units, that we would, that that would be behind the curb, and in our case, will be behind the property line as well, so there'll be plenty of setback. That's under section nine, and the two units that have, that are fronting 56th Street, we agreed that their front doors would front 56th Street. And then last, we agreed to continue to work with the City of Oklahoma City on finding a resolution to the flooding condition on 56th Street. Rewind the clock about 15 years, and when we were working with Chesapeake, the, there was detention ponds being constructed to the north, but 56th Street was a problem at that time, we provided additional detention in the class and curve, but it still didn't remedy the problem that's there. The neighbors immediately to the west hired us to do a flood study for them, to allow them to build their house, they had to raise their finished floor quite a bit, Oklahoma City Council passed a resolution back at that time, that as soon as funds became available, they would install and repair this small culvert under 56th Street that would solve the problem, and so we, I've agreed that we'll continue to encourage, especially with the new bond money, to try and get some funding put forth on this effort, and it would help the whole neighborhood out by fixing that problem. We get a heavy rain and the street actually floods, there's a couple of feet of water go over it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I understand Mr. Littlefield is here in support, I'd like to have him have an opportunity.
Do you live in this neighborhood?
I do not.
Oh, you kept saying we, in a certain way, that made me think...
I feel like I'm a member of the Neighborhood Association, we spent many years together working on solutions for Chesapeake's development.
Yes, and, and I have to say that Mr. Johnson has been sort of consistently helpful with respect to resolving those issues through the years, which is much appreciated. Mr. Littlefield, would you like to come forward and speak? Keep it short.
Five hours?
Rob Littlefield, 1148 Northwest 56th Street, I'm president of Meadowbrook Acres Neighborhood Association, this should be the easiest thing for you the whole day, to have an opportunity for that particular site to be developed as residential, for this two-and-a-half-block neighborhood is a phenomenal opportunity. Approve it, I don't know what else to say, I'm happy to answer any questions. The flooding issue, I don't think, is anything that affects the opportunity for that particular site to be developed, but it gives that, the neighborhood an opportunity with it being developed, to have more, I think, ability to have conversation about getting it resolved. Thank you.
And we did meet on this, and, you know, the neighborhood was, was very good, as they always are, about wanting to be supportive, wanting to be able to come and voice their support, and they had a few issues, the applicant was very willing to, you know, address them, and they were resolved, so I respect staff's, you know, initial concern about not having the time to review them, but they're so minor with respect to the overall application, and they're all good, so... So unless somebody else has something, does anybody else want to be heard? Unless somebody else has something they want to say, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I have a motion to second to approve item number 16, will you cast your votes, please?
Thank you so much.
It is approved.
The remaining items have been continued or withdrawn?
And, we still have, we'll go through the list. Additional items, communications reports, planning commission committees, I don't think we have any, planning commission members, anybody have something they want to say? Planning department, no, oh, no. Development services, he just went outside, municipal council's office, no. Citizens to be heard, that was who I thought you might be, citizens to be heard, no?
No.
No? You don't have anything you want to tell us? No? Other business? Adjournment?
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor say aye. Any approved, any opposed? Where adjourned?